Good evening. This October 12th, 2017, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. A moment of silence on the performance of the National Anthem by the Marshall High School State's Men Singers under the direction of Kelly Pearson.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and the Republican Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. (Music) Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free, the free and the home of the...
Thank you, Marshall High School. That was beautiful. And thank you, families who have come this evening to share your wonderful students with us and to the faculty who's also here, I suspect, from Marshall High School. Very, very well done. Thank you.
And Principal Litz is in the audience. Thank you. Amazing work.
A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under upcoming School Board meetings. A meeting is also being streamed live online. Select School Board from the full menu, then click on the Watch Live button on the School Board Meetings website. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. I will now call on Ms. Vedekonda for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This week, October 9th through 13th, we are celebrating National School Lunch Week. National School Lunch Week is officially scheduled for October 9th through 13th by an act of Congress. Using the theme "School Lunch: Recipes for Success," National School Lunch Week promotes excitement about the benefits of students consuming wholesome, healthy school lunches of fresh fruits, veggies, whole grains, and milk. The 2017 event will encourage school food professionals to highlight the secrets to school lunch success, healthy food choices, and of course, our students. This National School Lunch program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children and has been joined through the years by many other excellent child nutrition programs. There is a continued need for nutrition education and awareness of the value of school nutrition programs, and the School Board encourages all residents to become aware and concerned about their children's and their own nutrition habits in the hope of achieving a more healthful citizenry for today and the future. This week, we're also celebrating Teen Read Week. Teen Read Week encourages teens to go beyond the traditional book and explore poetry, audiobooks, books about music, and more at their school and local library. The 2017 theme "Unleash Your Story" encourages teens to tell their own stories, as well as find stories, biographies, autobiographies, and folktales in their local library. Teen Read Week has been observed since 1998 in an effort to engage teens in reading for pleasure and fun and to use the services at the library. Research shows that teens who read for fun have better test scores and are more likely to succeed in the workforce. The School Board encourages all FCPS teenage students to take advantage of the resources in their school and public library and to become lifelong readers and learners. This month is also Disability Employment and Awareness Month. Did you know that October is National Disability Employment and Awareness Month? This year's theme is "Inclusion Drives Innovation." Each year, Fairfax County Public Schools participates in the National Disability Employment Awareness Month, which promotes career development for individuals with disabilities through hands-on career exploration and job shadowing in the following fields: administrative support, animal care, business management, communications, information technology, parks and recreation, and human resources. The National Disability Employment Awareness Month strives to encourage students to explore potential or career or employment opportunities, to learn more about businesses in their community, and begin to plan to achieve more successful employment outcomes.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan Public Hearing. At this time, we will open the public hearing on the Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan. On September 28th, 2017, staff submitted a plan to the Board to meet Virginia Department of Education standards, which require each local school board to adopt biennially a Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan. The Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan includes pertinent data from the FY 2017 Student Achievement Goal Monitoring Reports, which highlights academics' essential life skills and responsibility to the community. Additional information is included about enrollment projections, technology, parent involvement, and cooperation with neighboring school divisions. Board action on the plan is scheduled for October 26th, 2017. Tonight, we have three speakers. Please come forward to the lectern when I call your name. You will have three minutes to address the Board. The deputy clerk will start the timer when you begin to speak, and you'll be able to see the time remaining on the clock on the lectern. The buzzer will sound at the conclusion of your three minutes. If you have not registered to speak tonight but would like an opportunity to address the Board, please see one of the clerks to sign up for one of the five extra reserved speaker slots. But I believe we, at the moment, have three speakers. The first speaker is Diane Cooper Gould.
I'm Diane Cooper Gould, President of Fairfax County SEPTA and a mom of a daughter with dyslexia and a son with autism. As a premier school system, we need to be courageous enough to really look at where we are doing well and where we are failing kids. So let's start with what is working. I want to congratulate the School Board during Dyslexia Awareness Month for investing in the universal screener. It will provide critical data to our county, so thank you. It is an excellent example of grassroots parenting, identifying an unaddressed special ed need, and how the leadership of FCPS and the School Board worked together with them to address that need, not just for special ed students, but to improve outcomes for all students. Unfortunately, it is our understanding that the county did not have the funding to implement the remediation portion of the universal screener. So my question now is, now that we have been, are going to be obtaining this critical data, how will we use it? What is the countywide plan for systematically addressing the deficits once identified? The Code of Virginia requires that the School Board shall adopt a Division-Wide Long Rage Comprehensive Plan based on data collection and analysis of that data, and the required components of the plan dictate strategies for improving student achievement, particularly the achievement of educationally at-risk students. Special education students have the widest achievement gap of any population in FCPS. And yet, nowhere in the FCPS strategic plan is there distinct mention of a plan to address the gap for students with disabilities. Too often, special education students are looked at as outside the rest of the school population. We are advised to be grateful for what our kids get because it is more than what special ed kids get in other areas. But the message is clear, that we are not to expect that our students are entitled to have an education and success rate equal to their peers. There is still a large data gap in our understanding of low special ed achievement in FCPS. There are many questions that need to be asked and answered. Comprehensive data collection will allow us to drive improvements in a proactive rather than a reactive way. Do we know how many students leave the system and why? How many students are unable to reach their potential because they are underserved or denied services? How many twice-exceptional children are denied access to either special ed support or advanced academics, or both, due to lack of understanding of programming for 2E students? Why are parents receiving conflicting information about available services from schools to school and teacher to teacher? And how does this variation affect outcomes? Gathering the data is our first step in addressing the achievement gap. Then closing the gap comes when we have a unified and effective strategy, as well as uniform implementation of that strategy across all settings. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Iskander Ahn, to be followed by Dawn Matthews.
My name is Iskander Ahn. I am a fourth grader in the French Emergent Program at Kent Gardens Elementary School. I am in the Advanced Academic Program at school. I am a Level 4 Competitive Gymnast and a second-degree black belt in Taekwondo and an artist. My dream is to be a successful mechanical engineer, but before this can happen, I need to fight through the effects of dyslexia. I struggled from kindergarten through second grade, before I found out that I had dyslexia. I struggled with my, with many things. For example, in kindergarten and even in first grade, I was, it was difficult for me to sound out words like "at." In second grade, it was hard for me to find anything interesting to read that was at my level. I was getting more and more frustrated, and I was starting to not like school. In third grade, I was teased by someone by saying, that said, "People with dyslexia are dumb." I am so grateful for the people that helped me in language arts and other things that I struggled in, especially Madame Deborah Klausser and Mr. John McFadden. Madame Klausser, my second-grade teacher, told my parents not to wait, but to ask the school for help with my reading and writing skills. Mr. McFadden, my special ed teacher, has been working with me for the past two years, and working with him has made me be able to read fluently, sound out words, and memorize how to spell sight words. I hope that every dyslexic kid gets the help that they need and knows that they are special. I'm a very smart kid, but I still need a little of help from the world around me.
We're always very pleased when we hear from students. After all, that's what we're here for. So thank you for coming tonight. You did a good job. Next speaker is Dawn Matthews.
I thought that was going to be at the right height for me, but I'm back. Many of you have seen me before, and even if you don't remember my name, you know, I know you think dyslexia whenever you see my face. You likely remember that my student with dyslexia no longer attends public school, and yet, I am still super passionate about improving services for the students that remain. Thank you for recognizing Dyslexia Awareness Month this evening. Additionally, I would like to thank Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Schultz for their continued support, and the entire School Board for the changes that have occurred over the past two years, including the hiring of a dyslexia specialist to revamp the literacy programs for both general and special education students, and the acquisition of a screening tool that will collect valuable data on struggling readers. This vital data includes markers of dyslexia. I will confess that I remain concerned that early elementary school teachers are receiving sufficient or not-so-sufficient training to correctly interpret this data, and that for teachers who do completely understand the red flags before them, that their voices will be heard by the local screening committee when they refer a student who appears to be at risk for dyslexia. And then, I worry about the day that a bright, yet moderately dyslexic student qualifies for reading remediation. This should be a victory to be celebrated, yet, as I man the decoding dyslexia table at conferences and workshops held by FCPS, I continue to hear the same story. I don't think the program my child is receiving at school is helping. I don't think it's an Orton-Gillingham program. I don't think he is receiving the program frequently enough to make a difference. Ladies and gentlemen, things are improving, but there is much work to be done. As you evaluate the Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan, please continue to ask the hard questions, such as, are students with dyslexia being identified by the end of first grade? Is there an adequate number of staff trained in appropriate remediation programs? Please continue to fight for better, more accessible programs for students with dyslexia. These bright students, like the one we just saw, are the creative minds of the future, and we cannot let them down. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another speaker, Samantha Schiller. Great, another student. We love this.
Hello, I am Samantha. It's fantastic that we are recognizing dyslexia, but I think we can help a little bit more. One time, I went to summer camp for a week. It was a dyslexic summer camp program and, for a month, and it really helped me. Like, I used to not like reading, and now I really, really love reading. I just have the time of my life reading. And I think that, I wonder why, we can't get the same help in school that I got in the summer camp, because I learned a lot there. And I really, really think that we can help. And I like we're doing well, and we can do more, and I think that is really good.
Thank you to all of our speakers who came out. This concludes the Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan Public Hearing. And I hope other students are inspired by our true student speakers tonight and that we will hear from more at other School Board meetings. It's great. Thank you, students. The next items on the agenda are some recognitions, and 3.04 LGBT History Month, I will call on Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The National PTA, the Fairfax County Council of PTAs, and the Fairfax Education Association recognize October as LGBT, Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender History Month. According to the National PTA, negative attitudes toward lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender students puts them at an increased risk for violence and bullying. Negative attitudes also impact a student's ability to learn at school. LGBT History Month is recognized in October nationwide and in FCPS to acknowledge and celebrate that LGBT students, staff, and families are an integral component of our nation and of Fairfax County Public Schools. This special month was first recognized in 1994. October was chosen to commemorate National Coming Out Day on October 14th, and the First March on Washington for Gay and Lesbian Rights on October 14th, 1979. One of the first gay-straight alliances in Virginia was founded at Hayfield High School in 2000, and now students are involved in clubs at many of the high schools in the county, welcoming not only LGBT students, but their friends and those interested in creating safe schools. LGBT History Month in October is an opportunity for Fairfax County Public Schools staff and students to celebrate and to learn more about these important constituents in our schools and neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Next, I will call on Mrs. Schultz for a resolution.
First of all, I want to thank the speakers who came out tonight. You touched me remarkably, and I'll comment on this as soon as I read the resolution. Whereas dyslexia is a language-based learning disability that causes difficulties with specific language skills, such as reading, writing, spelling, and word pronunciation, and whereas the onset and severity of dyslexia varies for each individual and impacts up to 15% to 20% of the population as a whole, and whereas literacy is a critical skill needed for educational success, and individuals with dyslexia benefit from effective teaching approaches that are multisensory, systemic, and explicit, and whereas Governor Terry McAuliffe has recognized October 2017 as Dyslexia Awareness Month in Virginia, to acknowledge educators specializing in effective teaching strategies for individuals with dyslexia, and to celebrate the many achievements of adolescents, students, and adults with dyslexia, and whereas Fairfax County Public Schools has instituted dyslexia awareness training for all elementary and secondary instructional staff and administrators, and whereas Fairfax County Public Schools is launching the FCPS Online Dyslexia Handbook to provide information and resources to FCPS schools and families alike as they support their students with dyslexia, and whereas parents, educators, and students will benefit from increased awareness about the nature of dyslexia and the combination of strengths and difficulties that individuals with dyslexia can have. Now, therefore, the Fairfax County School Board recognizes 2017 as Dyslexia Awareness Month and encourages all students to learn about dyslexia and to offer support to parents, educators, and individuals affected by dyslexia ISAMOOF.
You're seconded by Ms. McLaughlin. It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Schultz, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would. And I appreciate so much, looking back, just a few years ago, we had one or two or three advocates, and now we have many. And being the parent of students with dyslexia, the wife of a dyslexic, I know personally the impact that it has, the disparate nature that it can present for students who might be a general education student, or a twice-exceptional student, or a student with disabilities. And the ability to provide the tools for educators to better assess students in Fairfax County Public Schools is frankly a miracle. I thank the predecessors to, hello, Ms. Johnson, to Ms. Johnson, and as she carries on the work that it took to get to where we are. But please, I'm asking, don't let up on us advocates. Hold us accountable. Help us to help you serve our students and our educators better.
Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your second?
Just briefly, not only to echo the words of appreciation that Ms. Schultz said to our community advocates out there, but to just reinforce again why this is such a dynamic community to live in. Fairfax County is definitely blessed to live with some of the most highly educated individuals that any school system could hope for, and it is your passion, your knowledge, your advocacy that helps this Board, our superintendent, and our 24,000-plus employees truly serve the needs of your children. And it's often been said, when a system of our size, it's like a battleship, and you can't turn the battleship, you know, too severely and very speedy of a time as we would like. However, every day, every month, every year in a child's life is time that we can't give back to them. So, tonight's speakers especially, I want to thank you for raising our awareness some more about while we've made some really great strides, especially with the universal screener, we do have more work to do. And I do believe my colleagues and I, we have heard that we're not as standardized across the county as we'd like, and it is parent voices that help us understand where we need to then provide the extra supports and services. I know that our Assistant Superintendent Teresa Johnson shares the passion that Jane Lipp did, and we will get there, but it is through this partnership. Thank you for partnering with us on dyslexia. Thank you for partnering with us about the needs of special education students. We are grateful. And again, it's wonderful to be able to honor you and to honor this very important month. And so, thank you for being here tonight with us.
Thank you. I'll call for the vote on this resolution. All those in favor as a resolution presented? That vote is unanimous, and it passes completely, and thank you all very much for coming out in support. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is National School Bus Safety Week. I call on Ms. Polczek.
Yes, thank you. It is my distinct pleasure to once again bring attention to this important issue and to some of our staunch defenders of our children every single day, our school bus drivers. The week of October 16th to the 20th has been designated as National School Bus Safety Week. Based on the theme "Stop on Red," the week focuses on student safety when waiting for and boarding a school bus. School bus safety is an issue for all citizens of Fairfax County, who need to be aware of laws requiring them to stop and wait behind a school bus when it is loading and unloading student riders. The major responsibility for school bus safety in Fairfax County rests firmly in the hands of our school bus drivers and attendants, who daily transport more than 142,000 students in over 1,600 school buses on more than 6,500 separate routes, traveling over 17 million operational miles each year. It's a huge number. Joining us in the audience this evening is FCPS bus driver Anne Crombush, and has always been driven to do great things for students outside of our school division, with tremendous support from the Office of Transportation Services staff and local churches, and drove more than 1,000 miles to personally deliver 60 boxes of school supplies to Dade County, Florida, students who've been significantly impacted by recent hurricanes. Anne loves and looks out for kids, the ones she's fortunate to drive every day, as well as those whom she will never meet. At this time, I would like to invite Anne and her colleagues from the Facilities and Transportation Services Department to join us at the dais for a photo with the Board. Thank you.
Our next agenda item is recognition of Fairfax County Public Schools earning Virginia Index of Performance Awards, and I call on Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you Chairman Strauss. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. It's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity tonight to share with you our VIP Award winners. As many of you may know, each year Governor Terry McAuliffe and the Virginia Board of Education name schools that receive the Virginia Index of Performance, or otherwise known as VIP, awards for advanced learning and achievement. The VIP Incentive Program recognizes schools and school divisions that exceed minimum state and federal accountability standards and achieve excellence goals established by the governor and the state board. This year, I am proud to announce that 67 of our Fairfax County Public Schools were recognized for one of their three awards: the Governor's Award for Educational Excellence, the Board of Education Excellence Award, and the Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award. The criteria for the VIP awards are designed to recognize excellence and to provide incentives for school divisions and schools to expand academic opportunities for all students and to adopt best practices that result in engaging, safe and healthy learning environments. We will recognize tonight's schools in each of those categories. We're so excited to have so many of our school folks with us tonight, and when you hear your school's name, I'd ask you to come forward, and when all the schools in that category are named, we're going to take a picture with the school board. School board members, I would encourage you now to go ahead and come on down to the risers and remain there until the end, and I would also like to invite our Region Five Assistant Superintendent Dr. Francis Ivy to be our presenter of our award-winning schools. Dr. Ivy.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand and members of our school board. Two of our schools, Cooper Middle and Longfellow Middle Schools, were among nine schools in the state of Virginia that received the Governor's Award for Educational Excellence, which is the highest VIP award presented. I'd like to invite the following two schools to the front of the auditorium for a photo: Copper, Cooper Middle School, Arlene Randall, Principal, and Longfellow Middle School, Carol Keen, Principal, Wendy Eaton, Assistant Principal, and Jill Tucker, Director of Student Services. Do you come forward? Okay. Forty-three of our Fairfax County Public Schools received the 2017 Board of Education Excellence Award, a recognition of schools that have met all state and federal accountability benchmarks and made significant progress towards goals for increased student achievement and expanded educational opportunities set by the board. As I read the names, I'd like for the schools to stand at your seats, and then after we finish the list of all 43 schools, we'll ask that you come forward for a group photo. Okay? So, beginning the list, Louise Archer Elementary School, Michelle Macra-Gorges, Principal; Canterbury Woods Elementary School, Barbara Messinger, Principal; Carson Middle School, Gordon Stokes, Principal, and Sybil Terry, Assistant Principal; Chantilly High School, Scott Poole, Principal; Chesterbrook Elementary School, Connie Britt, Assistant Principal; Amy Valanth, 4th grade teacher; Chelsea Landman, 5th grade teacher; and Lavina Gunwani Colaso, PTA Treasurer; Churchill Road Elementary School, Mary Lynn Roboski, Teacher; Colvin Run Elementary School, Ken Youngie; Flores Elementary School, Gail Porter. I'd like to invite Region Two Executive Principal Mr. Jay Pearson to come and continue the list of the 2017 Board of Education Excellence Award recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Ivy. Forestville Elementary School, Todd Franklin, Principal; Frost Middle School, Eric McCann, Principal; Great Falls Elementary School, Chris Litts, Assistant Principal; Greenbrier West, Patty Granada, Principal; Hancock Elementary School, Jeremy Donnelly, Principal; Heather Boyd, Assistant Principal; Scott Reader, Assistant Principal; Keen Mill Elementary, Renee Miller, Principal; Kent Gardens Elementary, Pierre McGrath and Toni Rose, Assistant Principals; Kilmore Middle School, Ronald James, Principal; Lake Braddock Secondary School, Dave Thomas, Principal; Langley High School, Fred Amico, Principal; Madison High School, Greg Hood, Principal; Mantua Elementary School, Jan Marie Fernandez, Principal; Amy Alley, Assistant Principal; Marshall High School, Jeff Litz, Principal, and Phil Pedlican, PTSA President; McLean High School, Sean Rollan, Assistant Principal. I'd like to invite Region Three Executive Principal Grace Taylor, who will continue with the 2017 Board of Excellence Award recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Mosby Woods Elementary School, Mari Asti, Principal; Navy Elementary School, John Cook, Principal; Oak Hill Elementary School, Holly DeVore, Principal; Cliff Cradle, Assistant Principal; Oakton High School, Jennifer Hogan, Director of Student Services; Popular Tree Elementary School, Pam Gomez, 3rd grade AAP Teacher; Robinson Secondary School, Scott Turner, Assistant Principal, and Denise Lee, Director of Student Services; Rocky Run Middle School, Amy Goodlow, Principal, and Christine Shabika, Assistant Principal; Sangster Elementary School, Lisa Riddell, Principal; Spring Hill Elementary School, Bill Oak, Principal; Springfield Estates Elementary School, Mary Randolph, Principal; Sunrise Valley Elementary School, Tony Washington, Assistant Principal; Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, Dr. Anne Bonatavas; Wakefield Forest Elementary School, Sharon Prindle, Principal; Waples Mill Elementary School, Greg Brodomarkle, Principal; and Waynewood Elementary School, Alice Baronbaum, Assistant Principal. Executive Principal for Region Four, Dr. Eric Brent, will read the remaining schools in the 2017 Board of Education Excellence category.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. West Springfield High School, Michael Mukai, Principal; Shannon Matheny and Kate Rizzuto, Assistant Principals; Westbury Elementary School, Mary Tam, Principal; and Jennifer Sellers, PTA President; White Oaks Elementary School, Ryan Richardson, Principal; Willow Springs Elementary School, Dylan Taylor, Principal; Wolf Trap Elementary School, Teresa Kaluki, Principal; Woodson High School, Carlin Floyd, Principal. At this time, we will take a group photo for the 2017 Board of Education Excellence category.
Our next agenda item is recognition of Fairfax County Public Schools earning Virginia Index of Performance Awards, and I call on Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Strauss. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. It's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity tonight to share with you our VIP Award winners. As many of you may know, each year Governor Terry McAuliffe and the Virginia Board of Education name schools that receive the Virginia Index of Performance, or otherwise known as VIP, awards for advanced learning and achievement. The VIP Incentive Program recognizes schools and school divisions that exceed minimum state and federal accountability standards and achieve excellence goals established by the governor and the state board. This year, I am proud to announce that 67 of our Fairfax County Public Schools were recognized for one of their three awards: the Governor's Award for Educational Excellence, the Board of Education Excellence Award, and the Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award. The criteria for the VIP awards are designed to recognize excellence and to provide incentives for school divisions and schools to expand academic opportunities for all students and to adopt best practices that result in engaging, safe and healthy learning environments. We will recognize tonight's schools in each of those categories. We're so excited to have so many of our school folks with us tonight, and when you hear your school's name, I'd ask you to come forward, and when all the schools in that category are named, we're going to take a picture with the school board. School board members, I would encourage you now to go ahead and come on down to the risers and remain there until the end, and I would also like to invite our Region Five Assistant Superintendent Dr. Francis Ivy to be our presenter of our award-winning schools. Dr. Ivy.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand and members of our school board. Two of our schools, Cooper Middle and Longfellow Middle Schools, were among nine schools in the state of Virginia that received the Governor's Award for Educational Excellence, which is the highest VIP award presented. I'd like to invite the following two schools to the front of the auditorium for a photo: Copper, Cooper Middle School, Arlene Randall, Principal; and Longfellow Middle School, Carol Keen, Principal; Wendy Eaton, Assistant Principal; and Jill Tucker, Director of Student Services. Do you come forward? Okay. Forty-three of our Fairfax County Public Schools received the 2017 Board of Education Excellence Award, a recognition of schools that have met all state and federal benchmarks and made progress towards the goals of the governor and the board. I would like to invite the following schools to stand and remain standing at your seat when your name is called. We will take a group photo after all schools are recognized in this category. Centerville High School, Dave Jagels, Principal; Crossfield Elementary School, Connie Giovanni and Anne Weiss, Teachers; Flint Hill Elementary School, Jennifer Hirschberg, Principal; Franklin Middle School, Sharon Eisenberg, Principal; Hunt Valley Elementary School, David Fee, Principal; Irving Middle School, Sean Spear, Assistant Principal; Lower Ridge Elementary School, Tanya Wasenberg, Principal; Lee's Corner Elementary School, Bob Diamato, Principal; Veronica Sloan and Laura Tapper, Assistant Principals; Lemon Road Elementary School, Andy Komata, Principal. I would like to invite Dr. Ivy back to the podium to complete the list of 2017 Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award recognitions. Rounding out the list for this category, McNair Elementary, Hannah Frank, Instructional Coach; Oakview Elementary, Sarah Booker, Principal; Oakton Elementary, Christine Kelly, Principal; Powell Elementary, Jamie Larson, Principal; Raymond Ravensworth Elementary, Roxanne Salata and Patrick Boisjoly, Assistant Principal; Franklin Elementary School, Josh Desmider, Assistant Principal; Silverbrook Elementary, Travis Thomason, Assistant Principal; South County High School, Matt Regone, Principal; Stratford Landing Elementary, Maureen Marshall, Principal; Thoreau Middle School, Yosef Asimi, Principal; Union Mill Elementary, Kathy Case, Principal; Vienna Elementary, John Carmichael, Principal; and West Springfield Elementary, Kelly Shears, Principal. Let's give them all a round of applause. And now, if the group would come forward for a photo.[1448.13] Twenty. We will now continue with the recognition. Twenty-two Fairfax County Public Schools received a 2017 Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award. A recognition of schools that have met all state and federal benchmarks and made progress towards the goals of the Governor and the Board. I would like to invite the following schools to stand and remain standing at your seat when your name is called. We will take a group photo after all schools are recognized in this category. Centerville High School, Dave Jagels, Principal. Crossfield Elementary School, Connie Giovanni and Anne Weiss, Teachers. Flint Hill Elementary School, Jennifer Hirschberg, Principal. Franklin Middle School, Sharon Eisenberg, Principal. Hunt Valley Elementary School, David Fee, Principal. Irving Middle School, Sean Spear, Assistant Principal. Lower Ridge Elementary School, Tanya Wasenberg, Principal. Lee's Corner Elementary School, Bob Diamato, Principal, Veronica Sloan and Laura Tapper, Assistant Principals. Lemon Road Elementary School, Andy Komada, Principal. I would like to invite Dr. Ivy back to the podium to complete the list of 2017 Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award recognitions.
Rounding out the list for this category, McNair Elementary, Hannah Franks, Instructional Coach. Oakview Elementary, Sarah Booker, Principal. Oakton Elementary, Christine Kelly, Principal. Powell Elementary, Jamie Larson, Principal. Raymond Ravensworth Elementary, Roxanne Salata and Patrick Boiseli, Assistant Principal. Franklin Elementary School, Josh Desmider, Assistant Principal. Silverbrook Elementary, Travis Thomason, Assistant Principal. South County High School, Matt Rigone, Principal. Stratford Landing Elementary, Maureen Marshall, Principal. The Row Middle School, Yosef Asimi, Principal. Union Mill Elementary, Kathy Case, Principal. Vienna Elementary, John Carmichael, Principal. And West Springfield Elementary, Kelly Shears, Principal. Let's give them all a round of applause. And now, if the group would come forward for a photo.
You arranged us?
Oh.
I don't know.
But I know I'm here.
Neither one of you.
I know, me too.
The next order of business is citizen participation. Tonight, we have ten citizens who have signed up to address the Board and two video testimonies. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with individual students. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home. So language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation and thanks to those who have come to speak to us tonight. The first speaker is Susan Dainwitz, to be followed by Susan Yoshihara.
Hello. I'm a thirteen-year Fairfax County alumna, Stewart Pyramid homeowner and parent to three young students. I adore Fairfax County Public Schools. Fully removing the name of the Confederate general from our high school and replacing it with a new uplifting name paints a positive new story for my high school district. Right now, FCPS children can clearly hear the loud message sent by the high schools around them named only for white men, old white men. We must change our message of who counts in order to improve student achievement. We have an amazing win-win-win in the name Barbara Rose Johns. She's a Virginian, a passionate scholar, a brave and responsible teenager who embodies the international baccalaureate learner profile. She's deeply connected to our beloved local, Thurgood Marshall, through the Brown versus Board of Education case he argued for her, and she is both a woman and person of color. In one fell swoop, naming the school for Barbara Rose Johns, we can shift the balance of whom we valorize. We can open doors to girls and boys who have been left out of the roster of the worthy. Through this issue, I've learned about painful local Fairfax County history. In the fifties, Fairfax County bused our black children to the subpar Manassas Industrial School rather than educate them. Stewart stalled integration until seven years after Brown v. Board and even then kept sports segregated. My neighbor Elizabeth's parents had to have her move to DC for high school to get a decent education during the Manassas busing years. In the early seventies, my neighborhood minister, Ken, was his stat in the halls of Stewart and chased out of his white friend's Lake Barcroft yard by a mother yelling foul racial epithets. These black men and women are alumni neighbors who live among us today. They are not abstractions. We have work to do to face the future proudly. So, I'm from TJ, so I'm going to end with mathematical analysis. Our referendum reveals the community spoke and we are not irrevocably divided. The community is not as deadlocked as it may seem from your inbox and we want to remove the name of Stewart from our school. First, this was a legitimate community referendum. The nine-hundred-and-thirty-two household turnout tracks very closely with the two-hundred-one-thousand, two-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-nine individuals who voted at our eleven district polling locations in the recent at-large School Board election. We came out to vote. Second, using the vote data, I analyzed who our households support. The rejection of Stewart was quite strong, with nearly two-thirds, sixty-three percent, dismissing and rejecting Stewart entirely for any of their three choices. In fact, Justice Marshall won greatest number of household supporters, followed closely by Stewart and then Barbara Rose Johns. Third, as we know, the pro-Stewart vote is passionate, but I was surprised, however, that a mere eighty-one households, eight-point-six percent were Stewart-only. Meanwhile, seventy homes who supported Stewart, nearly the same amount, also supported Marshall, Johns, or Mendez. We are ready for a righteous and welcoming, inspiring name. That name should be Barbara Rose Johns.
Thank you. The next speaker is Susan Yoshihara, to be followed by Jo Pashoda.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Susan Yoshihara, resident of Fairfax County, mother of two young girls and one whose special needs. And I thank you for listening to me speak about the audit plan. I am a proud product of Fairfax County Public Schools, as are my siblings and my mom's a former teacher here. These schools gave me the skills and the confidence to embark, when I was seventeen, to the Naval Academy and a happy and long career as a Navy helicopter pilot. I'm very grateful for that. My feminist friends and I often wonder why we see what we think is a rollback in women's empowerment. One reason I see, as a mother of girls, is that girls today are barraged with confusing messages about gender, even little girls. In their young minds today, they hear that maybe being female isn't good enough. Maybe they could, maybe they should, transition into something else, maybe to a boy. I wonder, for example, about the girls in the schools today, what it must be like for them to celebrate gender identity and how that's affecting them, especially vulnerable girls. And I wonder if that might be a study we could add to our audit plan. I read recently from Lisa Marchiano, a psychotherapist. She's politically progressive and supportive of transition therapy, but she wrote recently that she's appalled by what she and her colleagues see as something called gen- uh, social contagion of a new type of gender dysphoria preying upon teen girls. They're calling it rapid onset gender dysphoria, and they say it's even more damaging than other versions. They liken it to what happened after bulimia was popularized unintentionally, and that claimed some thirty million victims. Marchiano gets frequent frantic phone calls from parents of girls who are rushed within weeks into testosterone injections and double mastectomies by medical professionals that she says have abandoned their gatekeeping role in the face of pressure from activists and also politicians. She says most of these parents have fourteen- or fifteen-year-old daughters who are smart, quirky, and struggling socially, and many of them on the autism spectrum. Now, why this sharp increase in this, what she calls "out-of-the-blue" gender dysphoria now? She says preliminary research points to social media sites that valorize being trans and that that explains why clusters of girls are transitioning together. Marchiano says that the growing community of detransitioners, mostly young women in their twenties, and those are the ones she works with, shows that loosening the standards, and I might add an unmitigated affirmation, an unexamined affirmation, has not served everyone well. So along with lifelong medical disability, this contagion can rob our girls of health, achievement, and confidence at a time that they really need them to enter college, embark on family life, and good citizenship. So I would just please ask that in the rush to celebrate gender and gender identity, let's not forget about our girls. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jo Pashoda, to be followed by Denise Patton.
Superintendent broadband, School Board members, and Fairfax County taxpayers. New roofing for a school is a costly expense, but a very necessary one. And when there is a compelling need, I have no qualms that my taxpayer dollars are being spent wisely to protect those facilities and those that are in them. However, when a school board decides to rename an existing high school, such as Jeb Stewart High School, and take on such a huge, unaffordable expense, it should be at the extraordinary, urgent, and compelling need. You have yet to define the urgent or the compelling need to taxpayers. Jeb Stewart is the first of possibly thirty other high schools or schools named in Fairfax County that are targeted for change. And I wish with all those principals that were here, I wish they could have heard all of this. But anyway, I yield my remaining time to Chris Amos-Mobil.
Good evening, members of the School Board, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Chris Amos. I am a father of a sophomore at Jeb Stewart High School. Concerns over the Jeb Stewart name certainly hit close to home for me. As a parent of a Jeb Stewart sophomore, however, I'm far more concerned about the peripheral aspects of the name change that hold critical impact for the school's short and long-term success. After a community vote, the second and third-leading name contenders certainly honor people of great accomplishment, cultural, and historical significance. They also, however, run up the cost associated with a high school name change. The community voted for the least expensive and most popular name, Stewart. Of paramount concern is the cost of this effort, reported to be upwards of one million dollars, for complete new branding. Some Fairfax County schools, like George Marshall, have enjoyed recent renovations while newer schools, like South County, have yet to experience the challenge of an outdated, inferior physical plant. At forty-plus years old, Stewart falls into neither category. No or insufficient air conditioning in the school's main gym, dangerously overcrowded hallways that raise safety and capacity concerns, roaches and, yes, rats in the school building, and perhaps more important, a diverse but rapidly growing student population with equally diverse needs that must be met if Stewart is to keep pace with leading high schools in Fairfax County and the state of Virginia more broadly. Compounding the issue is the question of funding, which must be raised by the school community itself. Given the overwhelming needs of Jeb Stewart, the least expensive option is the best choice, Stewart High School. There's pride among current students of alumni of all backgrounds for the Stewart name. Substantial time, human, and financial resources have already been dedicated to the Stewart name change. While the motivation behind the name change of Growth in High School was one that's different from Stewart, I ask that you consider the Stewart name change as something of great importance to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Denise Patton, to be followed by Cheya Ortiz.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. I read the OAG Risk Assessment and Audit Plan Proposal for Fiscal Year 2018. It intrigued me that three years into the future, there's a plan to audit the leadership in School Board. I believe it should be sooner and should include a communications audit. A comprehensive communications audit would identify strengths and weaknesses in communication among the Board members as well as the public. The Jeb Stewart name change issue could be a case study, as it has not been cohesive or transparent and has led to divisiveness and confusion in the Stewart area. Despite clear rejection of a name change by the Stewart Pyramid, the School Board voted for change in a motion by Sandy Evans that offered a compromise. Evans' motion stated that, in the spirit of compromise and in recognition of the need to minimize costs as well as the desire for continuity by alumni, staff requests that the Stewart community consider Stewart High School as a new name. Many School Board members are on record favoring a Stewart compromise in their discussions at the July seventeen work session. Ms. Heinz said, "I listen to my colleagues talk about finding a compromise, and I think that's a great idea." Ms. Strauss said, "I'm willing to change the name of Jeb Stewart, and I will again reclarify what I would support. One is to remove the Jeb and it becomes Stewart, which then becomes an English-Scottish clan name, just like McLean." Ms. McLaughlin felt that after listening to Ms. Strauss, "I really would like us to consider calling it Stewart High School after the Stewart family." Mr. McAlveen went on to say, "A woman who emailed me suggested we name it after Gilbert Stewart. That's my humble suggestion." July twenty-seven, Ms. Corbett Sanders made her choice clear. "We need to heal this community, and I suggest that we need to come together with Stewart High School." A list of seventy-three possible names was put to a vote on September sixteen. No matter how anyone chooses to slice or dice the numbers, Stewart received the most points and more harsh holds voted for Stewart than any other name. The clear and overwhelming winner is Stewart. The fact remains that the residents of the Stewart Pyramid still want financial prudence from their School Board. Stewart High School is the most economical choice as well as the most popular. The students and community have embraced this change and are already tweeting messages about the new Stu, Always Raiders, and the school's 2017 spiritware now on sale proudly says Stewart. The Stewart community has taken your word that you want compromise and voted for Stewart, and I hope you will find it in your hearts not to disappoint them on October twenty-sixth. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cheya Ortiz, to be followed by Vince Nettuno.
Hello, everyone. My face, many of you should know well by now. I am Cheya Mahanti Ortiz, Spanish instructor at Northern Virginia Community College and the mother of a transgender alumnus from Robinson Secondary School. Yesterday, October eleventh, was National Coming Out Day, an event celebrated by many and one that also induces fear and grief to those who don't feel safe to come out. Today, the National Center for Transgender Equality published their 2015 survey with a state-by-state breakdown. Please let me enlighten the audience with statistics on Virginia transgender students. I quote, "Eighty percent of those who were out or perceived as transgender at some point between kindergarten and grade twelve experienced some form of mistreatment, such as being verbally harassed, prohibited from dressing according to their gender identity, disciplined more harshly, or physically or sexually assaulted because people thought that they were transgender. Fifty-one percent of those who were out or perceived as transgender in K through twelve were verbally harassed. Twenty-one percent were physically attacked and twelve percent were sexually assaulted in K through twelve because of being transgender. Fifteen percent faced such severe mistreatment as transgender persons that they left a K through twelve school. Transgender students have always been a part of the FCPS school district and they will continue to be here. They are not going away. I thank the Board for its previous affirmation of transgender inclusion by way of the updated nondiscrimination policy. However, as officials elected to educate and protect all FCPS students and staff, your jobs are not done. There can be no effective policies if training and regulations are not put into place. Letting these issues be handled on a school-by-school basis is not effective and leaves too many opportunities for inequitable treatment. We are already aware of at least one transgender girl who was attacked by a classmate towards the end of last school year. How many more cases of harassment, threats, sexual and physical harm will it take for the FCPS School Board to create well-defined regulations that will protect all students and staff? How many more transgender students will suffer in silence before the FCPS School Board implements training for all staff? I implore the School Board to put into place regulations and education before any more transgender students within our district becomes a statistic. Thank you. And I will supply the links to the survey when I email all of the Board members tonight or tomorrow. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Vince Nettuno, to be followed by Christian Barbosa.
Good evening. I'm Vince Nettuno, Class of Seventy-One, Jeb Stewart High School. Before I start, I was just wondering if I missed it, missed it, but I didn't hear, as much as I commend the principals that were here before, I didn't hear of any Mason District Schools in that list, and I'm curious as to why that would be. But anyway, the OAG Proposal for a Risk Assessment and an Audit Plan calls for a leadership in the School Board with three years from now, within three years- in the school board within three years from now. Why wait? The debacle over changing the name of Jeb Stewart High School begs for an audit of the process employed and its ancillary expenses. When a school board decides to rename an existing high school and take on a huge expense, it should be for extraordinary reasons. I believe that an audit will find that a lack of extraordinary or compelling reasons to rename our school. Many school board members boarded the Jeb Stewart name change train late in the journey. Five of you even tried to hit the restart button with your July twenty-seventh alternative motion. How we got here remains troubling to us, and that truly is the problem. We are not here today because the majority of Jeb Stewart students or the community wanted change. Every single survey and poll, whether acknowledged as official or not, said no, time and again, by a majority of respondents, yet the train kept rolling. We are here because the school board's process went off the track. Sandy Evans and Pat Heinz, instead of turning to the Stewart community or to the board when the five students came forward, reached out to the NAACP asking them to coach the students through the process. Long before the student community was even aware of the redrafting of Regulation eighty-one seventy-point-seven to include renaming language, NAACP members were involved in FCPS business offering edits to regulation and crafting vague language like compelling need and significant support. Is that transparency? We only found out in FOIA documents. My guess is that an official audit would reveal much more. Please ask yourselves, if the majority of my own community didn't want to change, but I did, would I be pushing for renaming a school in my district? If our Mason District School Board member was not for change, this would have never been, this would have been over long ago. Jeb Stewart was singled out for a heavy-handed judgment, yet this sets precedent for thirty other Fairfax County schools. Taxpayers, pay attention. Yet this sets precedent for thirty other Fairfax County schools, or do they need to worry if their school board member is for change? This is important enough and emotional enough and expensive enough that the school board should make uniform decisions throughout the county. The motion to change the name asks the community to consider removing the Jeb from naming it Stewart High. And many of you raised the idea of Stewart in work sessions and school board meetings. Yes, we know those comments don't necessarily translate into binding votes, but many of you said you thought that that was an acceptable compromise. We implore you to stick to your own recommendations, especially since the community vote supported it by a solid margin. It wastes the least amount of money, taxpayer dollars, and the change from Jeb Stewart to Stewart will be easier transition for the students and community. It's time for you to stand by your word and simply name our school Stewart.
Thank you. The next speaker is Christian Barbosa to be followed by Sarah Zaniallo.
Hello. My name is Christian Barbosa, and I'm here regarding the fiscal year eighteen Risk Assessment and Audit Plan. One of the stated objectives of the audit is to determine whether the ongoing processes for FCPS are adequately designed, functioned in an efficient, effective manner, and fully accountable to the Fairfax County citizens. In some regards, the school board has let down the citizens of this county in 2017, specifically those in the Jeb Stewart community. By dragging out and going forward with the costly renaming of the Jeb Stewart High School against the will of the majority of residents and students, the board has already pledged to throw away a substantial amount of money. Your moral obligation now is to minimize the adverse economic impact that squandering funds for a total rebrand of the school will bring. I live two blocks away from Stewart in the direction of Colmore. An overwhelming amount of families there cannot afford to even provide their children with a school lunch. Many more pay reduced fees that still imposes a strain on their finances. Further costs are levied on students who want to participate in extracurriculars, fifty bucks across the board, and then on top of that, they need to pay for equipment, instruments, materials, trips to competitions. No student should be told they cannot participate in enrichment because they can't afford the fees. In the classroom, the textbooks are falling apart and limited in quantity. Class sizes keep rising, and teachers aren't paid enough to stay. This is the state of things today. For fiscal year eighteen, however, you can slow the bleeding. The change from Jeb Stewart to Stewart will cost a half a million dollars, which is a lot. But it's a half million dollars less than totally removing the Stewart name altogether and replacing it with another. Half a million, they can go back into our school. Many communities in our country are working through these issues, especially in Virginia. L. Douglas Wilder, the first elected black governor in Virginia, reflected upon Richmond's current crisis, saying, "With the problems that we have in our schools today, particularly education, it's more important to improve the quality of education now, spending taxpayers' dollars more wisely now on the kind of things that we need to do now than this talk about destroying or taking down." A Richmond team named Biquan authored a new, a now-viral Facebook post on behalf of himself and four of his friends, saying things that echoed the needs of the impoverished portions of the Jeb Stewart family and really struck a chord with me. Everybody's painting the blame on Monument Avenue of the statues that reside here, but those statues never did anything to me or the people I care about. The only thing that ever harmed low-income people in areas is the violence that resides there. What I told you, what if I told you that there were kids starving in your backyards, living in rundown buildings? The schools we go to are unaccredited and broke instead of using the money to knock down statues that most people in low-income areas never even seen. How about using that money to improve schools, fix up the community that we see every day? Why not protest in our neighborhoods where we see the violence and hate the most? Everybody wants to help, and nobody is really helping, are they? End of the quote. There's been a lot of talk in this very room, tonight and in the past, about why we honor people and who we should honor. Right now, it is your moral imperative to honor the folks who need it the most, those living in the Jeb Stewart community. Please limit the cost and keep the name Stewart to show that you honor our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sarah Zaniallo to be followed by Keith Arthurs.
Good night, everyone. My name is Sarah Zaniallo, and I've been a teacher in Fairfax County for eighteen years. I'm also a board member and of the FCPS Pride and the sponsor of the Gender and Sexuality Association at Lake Braddock Secondary School. Both organizations support the LGBT communities. I would like to begin tonight by thanking the board and the county for recognizing LGBT History Month. Official recognition of this month grants teachers the opportunity to incorporate significant movements and events into their instruction. Events such as Stonewall and historical figures such as Harvey Milk may only receive passing mention in history books, but they can be explored further by the buildings, the teachers, and the students, further bolstering our LGBT students' confidence. We all know how important it is for all students to see themselves reflected in instruction, but it is not only our LGBT students who need to know the history of the discrimination against LGBT people and their struggle to have the same rights as everyone else in our society. I have worked with LGBT students through the GSA and as a supporter of human rights during the last fifteen years. Throughout this time, the hardest thing for me to hear is the students telling me that they do not have the support of their families. As a mother, this shocks me, but this is the reality for many LGBT kids. This makes it all the more important for the school system to make sure all students have a school environment that is both supportive of who they are and responsive to their needs. If the school sends the message that the students aren't welcome, where does that leave them? We know that anxiety, depression, and suicide are all prevalent among LGBT youth due to a variety of factors, including their home, family, and school communities, as well as society at large. Though we cannot control how accepting students, parents, and peers are, we owe it to all of our students to make our support for them clear and unequivocal. Students who do not feel supported or valued often become unmotivated, have difficulty concentrating, and may have trouble asking for help. A student's gender or sexuality does not change their ability to understand Shakespeare, nor does it affect their willingness to speak German in class. It will, however, if these students are neither respected nor protected. Teachers and staff have differing levels of knowledge of the needs of LGBT students. Some of us may need guidance and modeling to make sure we treat all students fairly. I urge the school board to pass and implement detailed regulations that support our transgender students. I applaud the efforts that Fairfax County has made in the past, and I hope we can continue moving forward to make Fairfax County public schools a model for cultural proficiency and understanding. An ideal Fairfax County graduate is capable of understanding the world around them and being a part of it. And I would like to say that an inclusive environment benefits us all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Keith Arthurs to be followed by Louis Mendez.
Good evening. I'm Keith Arthurs, and I'm from Vienna, and I have three children attending FCPS. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on the Fiscal Year 2018 Audit Plan. In the audit plan, you state your desire to achieve strategic goals through resource stewardship. The Virginia Department of Education vision statement is to create excellence in education, that all students be capable, responsible, and self-reliant citizens to promote college and career readiness. Core goals need prioritize over non-essentials. To balance a household budget, most homes prioritize the essential expenses and then eliminate all the nice-to-have items which nickel-and-dime your budget. In FCPS, pet projects often seem to take priority over the essentials. Two and a half years ago, I met with Pat Heinz about the FLE changes in sexual orientation and gender identity, and I was concerned that the FCPS budget was facing a huge shortfall, and yet somehow you had the money to prioritize these controversial curriculum changes. In addition to spending priorities, the reason behind controversial actions such as tonight's agenda item, recognizing LGBT History Month, states it's being done because, as the PTA states, because of negative attitudes that students hold. The motive to change kids' negative attitudes? I challenge that motive, since these kids' belief towards LGBT comes primarily from their religious beliefs and doctrine where sexual moral lines are drawn. In August, the most well-known and well-respected religious teachers came together to create and sign the Nashville Statement. This doctrine statement across faiths spell out biblical, religious doctrine on LGBT behavior. Just under fifty percent of the families in Fairfax County belong to religions that align with the Nashville Statement. The PTA would label the Nashville Statement as having a negative attitude. From the founding of our nation, it was necessary to prohibit the government from meddling in church matters. The Virginia Religious Freedom Act, written by Thomas Jefferson, also makes that prohibition clear at the state level. The United Nations Universal Declaration of Human Rights, Articles eighteen and nineteen, extend this prohibition internationally. Article eighteen begins with, "Everyone has the right to freedom of thought, conscience, and religion." Article nineteen says, "Everyone has the right to freedom of opinion and expression. This right includes freedom to hold opinions without interference." As elected officials and government institution, your attempts to coerce children's thought and opinion on sexuality by instituting programs and curriculum intended to abandon their closely-held religious doctrine or family teaching violates their rights and is an abuse of taxpayer funds. In conclusion, any expense like this paid by taxpayers, which is not a core goal of the Virginia Department of Education nor FCPS in achieving workforce or college readiness, needs to be eliminated first. Nickel-and-dime pet projects using county public resources need to be the first items audited and removed until spending is reduced below income. Improved class size, teacher salaries, test scores, college readiness, vocational training must always be the first priority. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Louis Mendez.
Good evening. As you can see, I am not Louis Mendez, because I won the coin toss. However, I am Tina Morgan Mendez, and I'm speaking on behalf of my family, many of which are here. You all want to stand up, family? This is all part of our, this is our huge family, but this is a small part of our family. The Fairfax County Public School Risk Assessment and Audit Plan focuses on achievement of its strategic goals. My comments tonight address those strategic goals as stated in the One Fairfax Resolution, a new model driven by equity that can be realized by naming Jeb Stewart High School after my father, Colonel Louis G. Mendez, Jr. We'd like you to know a few highlights about our dad. His life was a rags-to-riches one, but not in the traditional sense of achieving financial gain. What he accomplished was far more inspirational. A Mexican-American, Navajo Indian, rising from a humble, hard scrabble, beginning to become a West Point graduate, earning an MA from Georgetown University, a highly decorated war hero, a diplomat, and a dynamic educator. Dad was an inspiration to his family, the men he commanded, authors, historians, and so many others. Even the people of the small French town of Petau in Normandy were so inspired by dad that they honored him by naming him their main town square, La Place de Colonel Mendez, for saving the town from the enemy in World War II. He was awarded the Distinguished Service Cross for his actions there. We believe that the Stewart, excuse me, that the students of Jeb Stewart will find my dad's story inspirational as well, knowing that they too can rise up to be what they want to be and overcoming obstacles along the way. Dad's involvement in the Stewart community started in 1954, when he bought one of the original homes in Lake Barcroft on Stony Bray Drive. I remember when we moved in, Stony Bray was just a dirt road. There was so little traffic, we played ball and rode our bikes in the street, and we roamed through the woods that surrounded our house. Eight of us attended Jeb Stewart. Our family has strong, strong ties here. Fairfax County is our home, and we care about Jeb Stewart and the community we were a part of for fifty-eight years. Dad learned early in life that the most effective leaders have the courage to make the hardest decisions. He always said that, "At the end of the day, all one has is their integrity." You have three exemplary people to choose from for a new name. If you don't name the school after Mendez, Marshall, or Johns, you will have wasted a valuable opportunity. Remove the name of Jeb Stewart and name the school after my dad, Colonel Louis G. Mendez, Jr. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We now have two video testimonies. It will be played on the screen behind us as well as the monitors in front of us. The first video is from Laura Miller.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to provide public input on the Fiscal Year Eighteen Audit Work Plan. Question: Should an audit study be performed on processes, costs, and negative impacts caused by the name change of Jeb Stewart High School? To answer, let's start with just the facts. Jeb Stewart High School has seventy-five percent minorities from eighty different countries and praised for its diversity, integration, and harmony. There was no documentation of any problems with its name for sixty years. A 2016 poll found ninety percent of the students either liked the name or saw no compelling need to change it. Many African-Americans support keeping the school name of Jeb. So how or why did this happen? Originally pushed by a handful of vocal students and teachers two years ago. Name change effort characterized by repeated false statements, distortions, and involved out-of-county residents. Name change process was marked by irregularities, accusations, and divisiveness. Students testified to being bullied, threatened, and intimidated into silence by name change proponents. There was an inconsideration of wasteful spending and poor priorities. New name took cost up to $800,000, tens of thousands of dollars already wasted over the past two years. Students to pay an additional $200,000 in new Spirit Ware, and many are poor. Private donation interest is lacking due to the divisiveness. This is a bad precedent for FCPS. Students are now divided and demoralized. Sets poor precedent to change thirty more FCPS schools at a cost of up to $20 million. Robert E. Lee, Jefferson, Madison, Mount Vernon, and Fairfax High Schools are all at risk. Teachers object to wasting money while salaries are stagnant. Parents object to wasting money while class sizes are increasing. And now, school board integrity is at risk. On July twenty-seventh, seven school board members approved to change the name of Jeb Stewart High School, subject to the Stewart community to consider Stewart High School as the new name, in the spirit of compromise and in recognition of the need to minimize costs. On September sixteenth, the Stewart community overwhelmingly voted to select Stewart High School out of seventy-three names considered, and by a two-to-one margin over the second-place finisher. Students at the school have already adopted the new name, calling it New Stu. But school board members are now wavering on their commitment even though the community has spoken decisively. So in conclusion, yes, it is recommended that an audit study be performed on processes, costs, and negative impacts caused by the name change of Jeb Stewart High School in order to ensure fairness, equality, and lessons learned in FCPS.
The last video testimony is presented by Debbie Ratliff.
The FCPS Risk Assessment and Audit Plan focuses on achievement of its strategic goals. The One Fairfax Resolution is part of FCPS strategic goals and advocates a new model driven by equity. This new model can be achieved by the intentional renaming of Jeb Stewart High School for a woman or a person of color. The time is now to move beyond embracing diversity as an asset The time is now to move beyond embracing diversity as an asset and implement a new growth model driven by equity, just in fair inclusion into One Fairfax, a community in which everyone can participate and prosper. One Fairfax can only be realized with an intentional racial and social equity policy at its core. A racial and social equity policy provides both the direction and means to eliminate disparities and work together to build a vibrant and opportunity-rich society for all. The named Stewart High School honors Jeb Stuart and the Confederacy, which does not support the One Fairfax Resolution and the FCPS strategic goals. It honors the Confederacy and its Confederate constitutional belief in slavery, white supremacy, and a slave-based economy, which was driven by the domestic slave trade out of the Commonwealth of Virginia. The Confederate flag has always been part of the school's brand, as these examples show: the gym floor, wall mural, letter jacket, letter jacket close-up, and the football jersey. The image of Jeb Stuart, the cavalry rider, the raider, has always been in silhouette. Today, the flag is in silhouette, like the rider. Removing the colors of the Confederate flag, the stars and bars didn't change what the flag represents and its connection to the school's namesake and the Confederacy. Removing three letters from the school's official name will likewise not change the school's namesake and its connection to the Confederacy. Stewart High School and the Raiders will always be Jeb Stuart High School. Just as a cavalry rider, the raider has always been Jeb Stuart, and the flag has always been the Confederate flag. FCPS has an exciting opportunity to choose a real new name for our high school, a new name that will support the One Fairfax Resolution and FCPS strategic goals. A new name that will reflect our community, our community's values, and support the One Fairfax Resolution. Unbelievably, no high school in Fairfax County is named after a woman or a person of color, so our high school can be the first one. The first high school in all of Fairfax County named after a woman or a person of color, that is the headline we want to see. The superintendent has recommended these three names for the school board: Barbara Rose Johns, Justice Thurgood Marshall, and Colonel Lou G. Mendez, Jr. The school board can choose any one of these three names, names that reflect our community's diversity, the diversity of our country, and more importantly, our values of diversity and inclusion, which are detailed in the One Fairfax Resolution. A new model driven by equity.
Thank you. That includes citizen participation. Thank you to everybody who has come out to speak to us this evening. The next item on the agenda is Student Representative Matters, and I call on Ms. Vettacanda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Throughout the past few months, I've talked to members of the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council and other students to determine what my priorities will be for the year ahead, and the two main issues that have been brought up in the first part of the year include our current budget and the student fees and mental health. So many of our students are concerned about not being able to take AP exams this year after the most recent budget that limited coverage of AP exams to six over the course of a student's four years. This has particularly affected our seniors and juniors who have already taken AP exams in years past that could cause them to exceed this limit this year. But across the board, not covering all AP and IB exams often hinders students' ability to take these exams to gain college credit that will help them reduce overall college costs and to also get a leg up and pursue higher-level classes in college. Looking ahead to budget discussions, I hope that we'll be able to reverse these change and also reduce the fees that students currently have to pay for participating in extracurricular activities. While we are providing waivers for students on free and reduced-price lunch, it's important to note that many families who don't qualify for these waivers often don't have the funds to pay for these exam and extracurricular fees, which can total up to several hundred dollars a year. And it is our responsibility to make sure that every student, regardless of what their financial situation may be, can pursue whatever extracurricular and academic paths they want to. I know we're always strapped for cash in our annual budget, but I hope we can make this a priority, or if it's impossible to do with the numbers that we have, if we can work with the foundation or individual high schools to set up funds where people can donate to support AP and extracurricular fees for students who can't afford them. Another major issue that was brought up was mental health. It's incredible how our students are so committed to making sure that their peers never feel that they have no one to turn to. At some schools, we've seen peer counselors and student support groups have success in helping students deal with academic and social pressures, particularly for freshmen who often feel overwhelmed in the transition to high school. And we've seen students eager to share information about suicide prevention and mental wellness tips with their friends, and mindfulness programs by school social workers and school psychologists have been very helpful in teaching students how to deal with stress in a healthy way. And our students also recognize how important it is to reduce bullying and discrimination within our schools as part of improving mental health, especially for LGBT students who face higher risks of suicide and depression. We must be committed to across-the-board reform of the policies we currently have to make sure that every single student never feels that they aren't loved or aren't part of the FCPS community. We passed a suicide prevention policy last month, but in order to make this a successful policy, we must make sure that our mental health policies support student initiatives rather than make them redundant. Students have continually expressed that programs run by students and their own peers are much more valuable than programs implemented top-down in a way that seems forced or artificial to many of the students. And moving forward in the implementation of this policy and future policies, I hope that we can utilize student initiatives to support our goals as a school board. I look forward to continue collaborating with students to identifying the problems in their schools, to see what we as a school board can do to help them solve their issues.
Thank you, Ms. Vettacanda. We always appreciate hearing the ideas and needs of our students through your representation. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the FY 2018 Risk Assessment and Audit Plan. I call on Esther Ko, our Auditor General, for the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the school board again for giving me this opportunity to serve as the Auditor General for FCPS. And this evening, I would like to take a moment to share with you the FY 18 Risk Assessment and the Audit Plan. I would like to adopt a similar approach that our leadership team has adopted, so I'm going to use a one-pager as well, as a summary, to share the key talking points with you. Then on Monday, October 16th, work session, my colleagues and myself will go over other key information from the Audit Plan and be able to answer any questions that the board members may have. The full FY 18 Risk Assessment and Audit Plan report has also been uploaded to the Board Doc for your review. So to start off, in order for us to have a successful audit plan, we need to know clearly the goals and the objective that we would like to achieve. Just like when we drive, we need to know the destination before we start. So there are two key purposes for the FY 18 Audit Plan. One is to promote the FCPS achievement of its strategic goals, particularly in the area of resource stewardship. And secondly, the Audit Plan should accomplish the Office of Auditor General's mission, which is to independently determine whether the ongoing processes for FCPS are adequately designed, functioning in an effective and efficient manner, and be fully accountable to the Fairfax County citizens. So after we know the destination, the next question is how to get us there. The Office of Auditor General adopted a risk assessment approach to identify and prioritize audit topics. I will talk about the risk assessment process in a little bit. So first of all, I would like to bring you to the outcomes of this risk assessments. My office has identified 10 audit topics to be completed in fiscal year 18. Three of them are carry-forward audit from FY 17, and the other seven are new topics for FY 18. In addition to complete these 10 topics, my office will also focus on the following duties. Number one is to follow up on the audit findings, to ensure that audit findings are being resolved and remediated in a timely manner. Secondly, we will start also the FY 19 Risk Assessment Plan, because before we know, FY 19 will arrive. Thirdly, we will continue to manage the fraud, waste, and abuse hotline, and we will also increase the use of audit technology so that we can make smarter choices in audit samples and be able to run audit analytics and reports automatically and in a higher quality. Last but not the least, my office will continue to meet the professional educational development so that we can stay on top of the local government audit requirements and any hot topics and be the subject matter experts. So, okay, let's come back to the risk assessment process. I'm very grateful that before my appointment, the school board, the audit committee members, and the leadership team have already identified 40 or so audit topics for consideration. In addition to these topics, my office performed further research into other school districts and to see what kind of audit topics that they are interested at looking. And myself also reviewed a lot of my office's past audit reports to identify if there are any remaining key audit issues that we have to address. With all of these efforts, then now it adds to the audit universe of 44 topics. So once this audit topic universe is developed, my office evaluates the relevant financial, reputational, and operational risks related to each of the topic, as well as what is the opportunity to improve on these audit topics. As a result of these audit priorities, we developed these audits into three different categories. The primary audit priorities will be completed during FY 18. The secondary audit priorities will be completed in FY 19, between FY 19 and FY 21. And then the long-term priorities will be considered after FY 21. The audit topics identified under the primary priorities, again, these are the priorities that we would like to focus during fiscal year 18. In the alphabetical orders are, number one, adult community education business model; number two, the business process turnover audit that many of us are familiar with; the third one is facilities maintenance audit; the fourth one is school activity fund audit; number five is private transportation. Private transportation is defined as the means to transport students outside of the normal school bus service to meet the daily educational needs of these students. Number six is the procurement and contract process oversight, and number seven is the workers' compensation process. I would also like to take a moment to explain the audit process to all of you. As you can see, the graphic in the middle of the summary, which describes the audit, is actually a continuous process. To my internal audit clients, it doesn't mean that the audit will never end, but it just means that every time, the audit cycle should be a more informational and be a more effective one, so that the audit findings and what we learn from each audit can feed back into the risk assessment process for next year. So with that, I would like to conclude by thanking the school board members and the leadership team and the staff in all the departments to contribute to the FY 18 Risk Assessment and the Audit Plan process, so that FCPS will continue to embrace the resource stewardship and our commitment to accountability, open communication, and transparency. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ko. We appreciate your presentation, and thank you for being our Auditor General. We welcome you heartily. And we look forward to our discussion at the work session on Monday. And Mr. Moon, did you have a clarifying question?
Yes, and also a reminder to my colleagues on the board that I'll be managing that portion of the work session on Monday. We have a one-hour set aside for discussion on this particular topic, and if you're interested in offering any different topics for next year's audit, please bring that to the table on Monday for discussion, for the list of those 40-some topics.
We have 44, but we are welcome to have more.
Right, and they are listed in Appendix 1. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Corbett-Anders?
I just wanted to congratulate you on a very thorough work plan. I was thrilled to be able to read it and see the progress that has been made in your department. Job well done, and I look forward to a discussion on Monday.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we will have our next discussion on Monday. Thank you very much. The next part of our agenda is the Consent Agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 5.01, approve the minutes of the September 28th, 2017 regular school board meeting. 5.02, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. 5.03, adopt the policies on the No Change Memo as detailed in the agenda item. 5.04, award a contract for the Robinson Secondary School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, RD Bean Incorporated, in the amount of $973,815, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. New business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action will be scheduled at a future meeting. 6.01, approve the fiscal year 2018 Audit Plan as detailed in the agenda item. 6.02, award the contract for the Automatic Temperature Control System replacement at Columbia Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.03, award a contract for the Luther Jackson Middle School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.04, award a contract for the Chantilly High School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Next is Superintendent Matters. Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Strauss. A couple of things. One, I want you to know I continue to work around the successful implementation of my entry plan in my first few months here. I have completed all my meetings with the Board of Supervisors, and I want to report to you that those all went very, very well. I've actually also appeared on Supervisor Cook's TV show that he does, and we've had some great conversations. I also met earlier this month with the county council PTAs, and just earlier this week, I met with SEPTA, who you got to hear tonight, two fantastic groups really committed to wanting to support Fairfax County Public Schools, but also take it to the next level in achievement for students. I've also met with Fairfax County Police Chief Edwin Rossler to tape a joint message on our partnership for Safe Teen Driving, and I'm working on following up to have a one-on-one meeting with him to go over areas of mutual interest and concern between Fairfax County schools and the police department. As part of this entry plan, I'll be holding or am hosting five community conversations over the next couple of months to hear what students, parents, employees, and members of the community are thinking about. It's going to be done, one of those conversations will happen in each region, and then we'll have one in January for folks that couldn't attend any of the regions. They'll all begin at 6:30 with a meeting greet, and there'll be discussion and Q&amp;A from 7 to 8. You can visit the website for the upcoming dates. Each region is actually creating a one-pager about their region and what goes on, so the community can learn more about that with information about how to contact the Regional Assistant Superintendents. In fact, we've really updated the website to make it even cleaner and clearer, or we're about to, so I better be careful before I say it's been done, to make it even easier to just click and get in contact with the Regional Assistant Superintendent when you have questions about a matter at the school. So I'm very pleased with that. Speaking of being pleased, we had a fantastic all-county principals' meeting last week. I've already talked to principals. We're getting formal feedback, which I can share with you later, but the informal is it's been very, very good, and it's the kind of feedback, it's the kind of work that in professional development they want to be getting to help them lead their schools better. We had Dr. Shiroki Holly. We had Dr. Shiroki Holly. He's done a lot of work out in California, in the schools out there, and he presented six ways to know if you are culturally and linguistically responsive. And then there were breakout sessions to dive deeper into that topic. Frankly, we also had a second session on data literacy, how to better use data to drive instructional improvement in your schools. So honestly, I went to both of those. I didn't stay just for the introduction. I stayed for both and dove in, and I'm really, really pleased with the work that Dr. Duran and his entire team did to pull off the all-county principals meeting. Kathleen Walts, too, a big part of making that happen. My Friday school visits and department visits are going well. I'm up to 28 schools. I have a slew of schools tomorrow to visit. I've also been visiting departments. I went out and visited all of DIT operations, starting at Woodson. Many of you maybe didn't even know that Woodson has a big DIT field services place over there. And then went through Wilton Woods and Nancy Sprague Center. Really powerful to go there, and I had never really seen everything that had been finished for Nancy. Just a wonderful, wonderful tribute to a wonderful person in Fairfax County history. So we're continuing to do those. We're going to focus on excellence through school visits, and I believe this will help us continue to be a school-centric school system, because the real core of what we do is between those kids and that teacher in the classroom. And when I visit classrooms, I have shared with principals, I'm wanting to let you know, I will be asking kids three questions. What are you learning? Why are you learning it? And how do you know you've learned it? What, why, and how? For those of you who've been around, we also have a learn model in Fairfax County. All that's been adapted to a learn model that will be shared with principals, so that teachers that already currently have lesson plans can already sort of embed some of those questions into it. But we need to be sure we can articulate, and we are articulating to our kids, what are we learning every day? And hopefully, it's standards-aligned. Why are we learning it? What's the relevance and big idea? And then how do we know? In fact, part of improving schools, the more, this is an old phrase from a long time ago in Skillful Teacher that we had here called dipsticking. We call it today form of assessment. Checking in at the end of a lesson through an exit ticket, a small summary, a journal. Do we truly, did the kid understand the material that we covered in that day? So I'm very excited about doing that, and one of the other things I've shared frankly with our principals, we've talked about it as I've rolled out my entry plan, a commitment to excellence, a commitment to equity, and a commitment to effectiveness. I am adding a word with the letter J. I think I've shared this with you before, but I'm saying it again, and you'll hear me repeat it. Rediscovering the joy of being in Fairfax County Public Schools. We have our challenges, but I'll tell you what, I've seen so many things coming back that just are absolutely amazing, and I am loving every minute being superintendent in this school system and seeing teachers and principals and central office staff just doing amazing things. So one of the things I remember when I was a principal and I was having a rough day, and I'm going to do it, I'm doing it as a superintendent now, I get to do it once a week, is go out and see a classroom and see kids, and that changes your whole perspective on things. Speaking of going out and seeing kids, yesterday I had a great event that I got to go to at Lynbrook Elementary School for the opening of the 5,000th salad bar in the United States that was through a partnership with the Chef Anne Foundation and the United Fresh Start Foundation, the Whole Kids Foundation, and the National Fruit and Vegetable Alliance. We were the 5,000th, and I've shared with you already my commitment to get all the rest of those elementary schools done over the next couple of years. And Rodney and I are talking about how we can accelerate that work. The kids did have already some ideas about how to up the game with the salad bar. We went around about favorite vegetables, and one kid said, "All that's good, but we need mangoes added to the salad bar." So we'll see what we can do. And I was thrilled to have the First Lady of Virginia, Dorothy McAuliffe, come, who's been championing healthy food as well. I do want to say again, Rodney Taylor has just done an outstanding job with this. So proud to have someone who really left the West Coast, left California, and came out and wanted to be a part of what we were doing here in Fairfax County. Since it's my superintendent matters, I got two other quick things to say. You already got to see tonight. I know I have no credit. I want to just thank you for giving us the most amazing auditor general that any school system could ask for, Esther Coe. I am telling you already, in my estimation, is going to be an outstanding addition to Fairfax County Public Schools. She's been a collaborator. She has asked for and received my full invitation to come to all of our leadership team meetings to learn more about what we do on leadership team, and I have set up the opportunity for her to visit schools just like I am, so she can learn more about the day-to-day operations of the school system from a classroom and school perspective to help her in her work. So that work continues. And finally, I just want to end with, you got to hear about Ann Cronin-Bush earlier, the school bus driver. Just want to give you a little bit more to that story. She's been driving with us for three years. Three years. She used the Department of Transportation staff with the support of them, some local churches, and there's a restaurant where Ann works part-time. She drove 1,000 miles and delivered 60 boxes, you already heard this, of school supplies to the students of Dade County. Her van was loaded with 450 backpacks, 100 packs of paper, 250 composition notebooks, crayons, markers, pens, pencils, pencil boxes, folders, and other items. You know, there's so much going on around the world right now that is impacting all of us. Seeing one of our own people who takes the initiative and follows through and helps another school system in need is such a powerful, powerful thing, and I'm just delighted, I'm humbled, that we have people like Ann in our school system who are doing these amazing things. I want to thank Ann again, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. And it's so good to hear your excitement with your Friday visits. We all really welcome that. And you're coming to my neighborhood tomorrow.
Ah, okay.
You'll love it.
Good.
Next on the agenda are school reports, and I call on Ms. Erinette Kofax for a report on governance.
Thank you, Chairman Strauss. The Governance Committee met yesterday, and we received a brief update from Mr. Plattenberg on Policy 8335, which concerns our wireless communications. And we will hear a more complete update at our November meeting, where a preliminary update to policy will be presented, as well as a look at our regulations. And in addition, at that time, Mr. Plattenberg and his team will be looking and providing us with some information from nationwide data on the health impacts of cell phone towers near schools. We also briefly talked about Shaq's request for two-year committee appointments, and we will be bringing this to the full board. The bulk of our meeting was spent on planning the agendas for the October 19 and November retreats. So in brief, this is what we decided. The October 19 retreat scheduled from 6 to 9 will focus on the board's request that Superintendent Braybrand update us on the progress, or give us a report card, as we had called it, on our strategic plan. We will look at the leadership team's prioritization of the plan, as well as the process they used. We have also moved the retreat that was focused on board improvement that will be scheduled for November 27. And we will use the November 2 date that was originally scheduled as a retreat to be used as a work session to have the board prioritize their goals in the strategic plan. I spoke to Ms. Strauss about these schedule changes, and she has agreed to allow us to implement those.
Thank you. I will call on Ms. Corbett-Sanders for an update on the forum that was held earlier this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Strauss. We had a very active forum this evening. Talked about two topics. The first one was the impact of mobility on our schools, and we agreed, working with Superintendent Braybrand, that staff would come back to us with an overview of mobility, the definition of mobility, the impact of mobility on our individual schools, and possible recommendations on how to address mobility through either staffing, professional development, or even legislative recommendations. We had a second discussion about the outcomes or the status of a 2014 report of the World Languages Internationalization Working Group, and agreed that the staff would come back to us with the status update and possible recommendations on how it could better be aligned with our strategic priorities, and that will be done in the next six months.
Thank you. Board matters, we begin with Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be brief. I am enjoying my transition onto the board. I have had the pleasure of visiting five schools now. I especially enjoyed the salad bar yesterday, and was able to attend an event earlier today with our Braddock representative with respect to kids going to homecoming and alcohol use and parent responsibility. So we did some brainstorming there about being able to get that message out a little bit in a more broad way. I'm also going to be setting up office hours and calling each of you for assistance on how best to complete some of the duties that I'm still figuring out, but I'm enjoying the process, doing a lot of reading, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Erinette Kofax.
Yes, I have continued to enjoy all of the events that happened in this early part of the school year. Last week, I was able to watch a competitive game at Hayfield's Homecoming, where they played a great game against the Mount Vernon Majors. I believe Hayfield was successful in the end. I attended my first APAC meeting. This is where I am the committee liaison, and the focus of that committee this year will be the Young Scholars Program. And I just want to say, it's always wonderful to see such dedicated volunteers when you work with these committees. So thank you for all of those who came out, and I look forward to working with you this year. I also attended a skip committee meeting, where we were presented with the preliminary strategic plan, and this was something that we've wanted to see for a while. It focused on ages birth to eight, early childhood education, and I wanted to thank both the county and school staff under the leadership of Ann Marie Tuie from the county and Maura Burke here at FCPS, who really championed this hard work and to get it to the skip committee. Yesterday, I also had the pleasure with several of my colleagues who've mentioned the opening of the 5,000th salad bar in the U.S. This bar opened at one of my schools in Lee District, Lynbrook. Thank you to Principal Jane Nocco for hosting this event, and thank you for Rodney Taylor for working with our partners across the country. And Dr. Braybrand mentioned them, but I think it would be, I'd like to mention them again. They were the United Fresh Fruit, Fresh Start Foundation, the Chef Anne Foundation, the Whole Kids Foundation, and the National Fruit and Vegetable Alliance. And their whole desire was to bring healthy food bars to our schools, and Mr. Taylor has worked diligently with them to get that happen, and we were honored to have the First Lady of Virginia, Dorothy McAuliffe. She's been a champion while her husband has been in office, working against childhood hunger, and we thank her for coming to that event.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes, just briefly, I want to thank, I continue to be amazed, and Ms. Keys-Gamara, you said you're going to hold the community office hours. I continue to be amazed. I always think that I'm going to hold them and nobody will come. And a Wednesday morning, a Saturday morning, you know, the line's out the door. So to all the parents who came, either advocating on individual issues relative to your child, to your school, to your teacher. I had a parent who came and advocated for help for her health aide in her school because she was so concerned, because they have such a dedicated health aide and over 100 new students in an elementary school for one of my schools. But in particular, the people who actually just came to say thank you. I'm humbled. I will continue to do these, and my town hall series for the fall will be scheduled shortly, but I greatly appreciate the opportunity to serve you and continue to work on individual issues that were brought to me with staff. Some of them are very complex, some of them have been very easy, and sometimes I'm able to get a win, and sometimes I'm not. But I can't do anything for the community unless you let me know what you need, and so I appreciate you taking the time.
Ms. Hines?
Yes, I want to thank the Fox Mill Elementary School PTA for inviting me to join them over the weekend to greet their exchange students from Japan. These are sixth graders from Japan, who will be living with families in the Fox Mill area. Fox Mill has a Japanese immersion program, so they had already, in two days' time, they had run around all of DC, and they were going out to Luray Caverns, and I mean, they had a very heavy schedule already, and they were not even worried about sleep. They were just going on, kid energy, I guess. And Principal Brian Moose was working the grill there at the barbecue, but they were all enjoying themselves. So thank you, and I hope you all are having a wonderful week. It's almost over, unbelievably. Also want to thank Marshall Road Elementary School for inviting me to join them to their STEAM night next Friday. I understand this is quite an event, and I'm looking forward to seeing all the wonderful things that the students are working on.
Mr. Moon, pass, Madam Chair. Ms. Corbett-Sanders?
Yes, I'd like to first thank Northern Virginia Community College for their excellent conference on workforce readiness and education that was held in combination with the Northern Virginia Chamber of Commerce and the Northern Virginia Technology Council. It was a very robust discussion, and I look forward to continuing those discussions. I also want to congratulate Lynbrook Elementary on their 5,000th salad bar event. It was a lovely event, and appreciate being invited. Want to thank South County Federation and the Mason Neck Community Associations for their events, where they gave us an opportunity to talk about education in our community, and would like to wish good luck to West Potomac High School for their homecoming tomorrow evening. And finally, I encourage people to go out on Saturday morning to Gum Springs Community Center, where there is going to be an A-STEM Fall Family Carnival, and you can experience all sorts of opportunities for STEM education in Northern Virginia.
Mr. McAlveen? Pass. Ms. Palchak?
Yes, I would like to thank Timberland's PTA and the Providence District Council for hosting two very informative meetings. I had a chance to participate in those. I will be hosting my office hours this month on Saturday morning, October 28, right down the street of Panera Mosaic, at 9:30 a.m. So I hope you will swing by, join me for some coffee, and chat about anything that might be on your mind this year. I'm very excited to hear about the Region One-Pager, so I look forward to bringing those to my future meetings. And I also look forward to the Saturday morning, having my first Providence Partners Meeting of the Year with members of our PTA boards and advisory committees to talk about goals for the year. And in addition, this Sunday is the Dunloring Picnic, and I know I will be joining some of my colleagues there. And finally, I really just want to congratulate all of the schools that came out tonight and that were honored by our state, our Department of Education, and all the schools that are working really hard every single day for our kids. I know it's a big job, and we appreciate what you do for our kids every single day. So with that, good evening, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Ms. McGlocklin?
A couple of things. First of all, I very much enjoyed attending the welcome reception for Superintendent Scott Braybrand and his wife, hosted by the Fairfax County Council PTAs. It really is a celebration for our school division to have Dr. Braybrand joining us and coming back to the family, and it was just a wonderful turnout, and they really did an amazing job showing how excited our community is for Dr. Braybrand to be joining us here. In addition, I was thrilled to be with my colleague, Illyon Moon, and Karen Keys-Gamara, for the rededication ribbon-cutting ceremony for North Springfield Elementary's renovation. It is truly amazing, and Dr. Braybrand, you're going to be getting an email from me soon. And looking this direction reminds me, Sandy Evans also was joining us, and it was wonderful having Sandy there. We were able to learn some more about the fact that our principal out there, Chad McCray, and my colleagues, you need to be aware of this, he was so innovative that he did special Wi-Fi wiring of his own efforts with the help of, I mean, he went out and bought the cable and all this stuff, and so they put special Wi-Fi in there so- and all this stuff, and, and so they put special Wi-Fi in there, so much so that one of, I think it's Epson printers or something, came and toured the building, and I mean, it's just incredible. So, it's a model for what we want to do, and so Dr. Braybrand and having Jeff Plattenberg go out will, will look at that, because I think it's very innovative what he did, so that they have that Wi-Fi throughout the building. And it's so important to do that during the renovation when the ceilings are up, and I see Jeff there, so you're awesome, Jeff. The other thing is that the sport court that was donated by a North Springfield alumnus, he's a world-renowned soccer player who just retired, but it's a very special sport court created by U.S. Soccer. And he donated and paid for that to be at North Springfield, so we got to see that as well. Just what a very special community that's been there for over 50 years. The other things that I just want to touch on briefly is that this morning, Karen Keys-Gamara was mentioning, she and I were at the Dialogue on Underage Drinking and Parent Responsibility. It was an event that Supervisor Cook had gotten approved by the board supervisors during a board matter. And Dr. Braybrand joined us as well, and Dr. Eric Brent from Region Four. But it was hosted at Lake Braddock with Principal Thomas and the, many of the Lake Braddock students in the gymnasium. But essentially, what the dialogue was, bringing together your supervisor, your school board members, Police Chief Ed Rossler, Deputy Chief of the County, Dave Rohr, Fairfax County Second Lieutenant Daniel Pang, the Senior Class Officer Will Peters who spoke. But the goal was to really help raise awareness for students about the perils of underage drinking as they are about to celebrate their homecoming this weekend, but also to help raise awareness for the students, and we were asking them all to go home and talk to their parents and say, "This isn't just a risk for your child or the other children in our community, it is a risk to parents. You have a legal liability if there is alcohol in your home, if you serve alcohol to your families." And it's, it's so important that parents don't realize sometimes, they think they're trying to keep children safe, but serving alcohol to minors is against the law. And Fairfax County's message today was, "They will prosecute." And as a school board member, as a parent, as a social worker, we do not want to see our families finding themselves in that situation. And so that, it was a really important public awareness campaign today. And afterwards, Karen Keys-Gamara and I talked about how we, as school board members, could really help deliver this message to our families. And so it's something that she and I are going to brainstorm about and then bring something to all of you, perhaps maybe through a forum, but we would like to partner with Dr. Braybrand and, and staff and really think about that. And we talk about giving our public praise, and so, I'm not sure that Matt Gilfoyle's still here, so hopefully somebody can tell him if I was complimenting him. But Matt did a great job coordinating with the Public Affairs official, Tony Castrilli, on the county side for today's amazing event. You know, Matt and his shop came through with some really great prepared remarks for me, so I was very appreciative of their work on this event, and it inspired me about what we can be doing more in positive public messaging for our, our families with the board supervisors. I also then want to just make my community aware of a couple of things. First, this Saturday, in two days, Supervisor John Cook is holding an event called Parenting in the 21st Century Year Teens. And it's something that he and the county officials are doing. They have invited a Fairfax County psychologist, I believe, for one of their breakout sessions. But it's something that he wanted to do in Braddock District with county services. But that's from 9:30 to 12:30 on Saturday at the Junior Achievement Finance Park near Frost Middle School. In two weeks, you, you will be hearing more and more about this in, over the next two weeks, but please mark your calendars, October 21st, Fairfax County Public Schools is hosting their Mental Health Summit at Fairfax High School. Dr. Braybrand will be speaking there. It's a wonderful time to get a chance to come out and meet and see Dr. Braybrand, but to really come together on something that affects so many students in Fairfax County Public Schools. We spoke earlier tonight that we are a high-achieving school district. We honored so many of our amazing schools for it, but with high achievement can come high stress. And so I really hope families will have the opportunity to come to that event on October 21st. And thank you, my colleagues, for your indulgences.
Mr. Wilson.
No apology necessary, Mrs. McGlaughlin. That was wonderful. You highlighted a number of key points, and some of them I'm going to piggyback on. In the Dialogue on Underage Drinking, it reminded me of something that I learned last week, which was that the United Prevention Fund, our coalition, has lost funding, which impacts the youth council portion of that for the school system. And so I hope to talk to Dr. Braybrand soon about what can be done to keep that important student organization going at our schools, because prevention is a critical part of what we need to be conveying to our, our teens. And as a parent of, of two teens in Fairfax County Schools now, I, I could have gone and potentially given a presentation at the Teen, Teen, Parenting Teens Matter, although I don't know if I could add very much, since they seem to confound me on a daily basis. I would just like to underline tonight, we took photographs with so many successful schools in our system, and it really underscored to me what a terrific school system we have, what a fantastic collection of school administrators in schools that are, that are doing such great things, that have so many schools honored tonight. It was just amazing. I also wanted to mention tonight that I'm, I'm very envious of Mark Greenfelder, who is at the Nats game, which I believe is in the third inning. Nats have hit a couple of home runs, and it's four to one, so I'm very jealous. But go Nats!
It's a 4-2.
Is it 4-2 now?
It's a 4-2.
That's, thank you, Mr. Moon, for the bad news. And this coming week are my office hours, so just to underscore what Ms. Schultz said, please come out. It's going to be Wednesday, the 18th, at 10:30 a.m., Chantilly Library. I look forward to seeing as many folks as can make it to come out and discuss any matter of interest to them with regard to the schools. And lastly, I just wanted to extend my prayers to Mrs. McGlaughlin's family, who has been directly impacted by the fires in California and in a real dramatic way. So you have my thoughts and prayers.
Ms. Evans.
Yes, thank you. I also want to say how pleased I was to go to the North Springfield Elementary rededication and ribbon-cutting. It was beautifully done, it was a beautiful day, and it is a beautiful school. So that was a lovely event, and I enjoyed joining Ms. McGlaughlin and Mr. Moon and Ms. Keys-Gamara there. I'm looking forward to Saturday, going to the Third Taste of Annandale, which will be going on all day on Thomas Davis Drive in, in Annandale. There are going to be restaurants and food trucks and some entertainment, so everybody's welcome, come on out and, and join us for the Taste of Annandale. And then a week from Saturday, we'll be honoring Holmes Middle School, which this board did two weeks ago. We passed a resolution honoring their 50th anniversary. And so we are going to have a celebration at Holmes Middle School on October 21st. And I will join Mr. Wilson and I'm sure all of the board in, in wishing the best for your family, Ms. McGlaughlin. I know we're, we're all thinking of you and sending, sending you thoughts and prayers.
Thank you. Yes, I, I also want to thank all of our students and employees who have reached out to help our many people in need in Puerto Rico, Virgin Islands, Texas, Florida, and now we have California in our prayers. It is devastating. I would like to thank the Greater McLean Chamber of Commerce for recognizing environmental program that our Churchill Road Elementary School's been involved in for a number of years. I will be visiting the Clearview Elementary School PTA soon. Langley High School will be rededicating its library as they progress through their renovation. It's very exciting. Herndon High School has their homecoming on Saturday, and I would like to give a shout out to Supervisor John Faust. He is working very hard to make sure that our schools and new school sites are appropriately dedicated and sited as we work through the number of very large developments that are planned out in the Dulles area. So Supervisor Faust is really fighting hard for our community needs of our children in our schools, so I'm very grateful to that. Also, we are now in the process of training hundreds of students and teachers and parents to begin our happy season, and it is wonderful to be, to be back with our high school students. I've had many nights now where I get to get back into the classroom with those kids. It's lots and lots of fun. So with that, I believe this meeting has come to a close, and we are adjourned.